Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the evening's zoning board. If everyone could please stand and put these aside.
The United States of America and the Republic of West Kansas. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Department Public Meeting Act has been given by the clerk in the following manner. Post it on the bulletin board in the Borough Clerk's Office and email to the retrospect and the courier post. Please sit down. We have a vote call, please.
Mrs. Duhon?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Here.
Discretion here. Mr. Pachowski.
Mr. Duhon?
Here.
Mr. Pachowski is excused, I'll go.
Mr. Duhon?
Here.
Mr. Ockley?
Here.
Mr. Laverdy?
Mayor is excused. Mr. Riney is excused.
Ms. Dodds?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Rowan?
Here.
Mr. Buck?
Here.
And Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Okay, there are a motion in order for approval of the minutes of the April 10th meeting. Are there any questions on the minutes? Have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 10th meeting?
Second.
Discretion. Mr. Duhon, all in favor?
Aye.
We have resolution 1909.
Mr. Rowan? Chairman, that was regarding 113A West Clemens Bridge Road, Lot 60, Lot 3, property that lies in the commercial zoning district. The applicant was a business owner in town and he was moving his real estate rights to this location. It was a conditional, permitted conditional use. The applicant did not meet all the conditions under Section 3952474, but we granted conditional use variance to allow him to proceed. It was an addition on that the applicant agreed to comply with the existing sign ordinance, that the applicant would utilize the existing trash enclosures, and the applicant would maintain any and all sidewalk trash enclosures, not to impede any traffic or pedestrian law plates. And of course, it would subject any other county or municipal approvals which he may require.
Your motion on the floor to adopt the resolution is read?
I'm thinking those are...
Mr. Duhon, Mr. Ockley, we have a vote call, please.
Mrs. Duhon?
Yes.
Discretion?
Yes.
Mr. Duhon?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Ockley?
Yes.
And did anyone sit in? Does it matter?
No, that could pass the or, the resolution, but then we may want to see then...
Okay, we're going to see then. For Mr. Pachowski and Mr. Laverdy. All right, so has that been approved? We're through that?
Five.
Adopted? We got five adopted?
We have five, yes.
Okay. All right, so for this evening's meeting, we are doing a variance, so Mayor Papadas and Councilman Riney could not be heard on this, so we are going to seek our alternates in, not in their place, but in the place of Mr. Pachowski and Mr. Laverdy, so they will be voting tonight, okay? Do you have a full, have a full quorum of a vote?
Yes, no, Chair.
Here. Okay. So, we have one more order of business on that particular application. Mr. Ockley is being represented by Mr. Viola's office and he, and by Mr. Viola, so he's going to step down in this as well. Okay? Just for, no conflict of interest. So if you want to go sit in audience, that's fine, and then we'll get through this and we'll get back to business, okay? Okay, under new business, we have application 1902. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, Andy, I want to see, do you have anybody else that's going to testify?
Just...
No, I'll swear in the applicant and our engineer gentleman, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate to the best of your knowledge.
Hey, please, Board, I'm Andrew Viola, law firm attorney of Viola. I'm here to represent the applicant, it's Alpha RE and Development LLC. I'm presenting my managing member, who is Omar Ali, also present is the other managing partner, Amir Rashid. The purpose of this application is, it involves the property there at 624 West Clemens Bridge Road, so this is that property, this is that stretch of road before the jewelry store where the, there's a great amount of mix of mostly residential and some commercial, but it's plainly zoned commercial. This particular house was found to disrepair and destroyed. It was purchased by my client, my client waiting simply to renovate the house on the same footprint, and the officials felt that because it was a new construction, that the use variance would be appropriate, because we're trying to put a residential in an area that's zoned commercial. But respectfully, we think it's a good application, we're just rebuilding on the footprint where there was already an existing house. We're prepared to offer my client's testimony, so we can meet the criteria and respectfully request for its approval.
Thank you.
Andy, does the survey prepared by Donovan dated April 1st, 2019 accurately depict the location of the existing structure?
It does.
And is it going to be your client's testimony that he is just going to instruct any new structure exactly on that footprint?
That's the plan.
And does he understand that if this board grants him this relief tonight, if he expands his plans for a building or debt or any other attached garage, is he going to come before this board?
That's understood. You understand?
Also including, it does not appear there, is there a driveway on the site?
Yeah, there is, but there's too much brick and the issue.
Is it a soil driveway stone?
It's not in soil.
In soil, so if you are, you do this, but if you're going to pave it or concrete or anything else, also you'd have to come back, because you do have a requirement for urbanis coverage.
Is that your intention? To pave? Yeah, just to make the concrete.
Well, let's, let's put it this way, we have, in the commercial zone, there's a 50% of urbanis coverage. If you work along with our code official and our zoning official, and you don't, do not exceed the 50%, you can do it by regular permit. And as long as you submit like a plan, so you have a record of what is being permitted for.
A zoning permit.
Like a zoning permit with a schematic of exactly what you're going to do, and then they would have to do the appropriate calculations to show that you're less than the 50%.
My fear is that the house, and if you pave that soil driveway, the extent that it is
right now, that you'll be over that 50%. So I would ask you to go to Mr. Knight and talk to him before you do any pavement or concrete of the driveway.
If you wanted to carry it all the way through to the other road? No, not moving on.
Okay, so before, before you do anything on the driveway, see Mr. Knight come up with an agreeable area that would not exceed the requirement of the town, so you don't need a variance and you would not have to come back to put this over.
When I visited the site, are you stating that you have a driveway, is it coming in off of Eastham? Because I didn't see a curb cut on Clemens Bridge.
Is there a main brick?
Yeah, there's a curb, is it?
On Eastham?
On the, no, on one.
On Clemens Bridge?
It's depicted on the survey, on the right-hand side.
Okay. What's it, what is, running along that little fence you have there? Is that, is that what you're going driveway?
No, there's no fence.
There's a, there's a, oh.
Little split rail.
Yeah, a little split rail fence right there. Really, I took a picture of it.
Where do you see the cut video?
I don't.
There was one on the survey.
I don't, I didn't see the curb cut.
You seen on the survey?
No. Are we talking about on Clemens Bridge?
On Clemens Bridge.
I'm interested. So you see where the side wall, it's drawn there.
There's a concrete eight from there.
Yeah.
That's over towards the split rail fence?
At least on the survey, it's shown against me.
Okay.
It's just not laid.
Where it says manhole?
Yeah, so if you just see how it's graphically indicated, it moves the sidewalk, it's drawn and it's in eighth and eleventh specifically there.
What are your plans for the rest of the property? I mean, obviously, it's in a bit disarray, it's quite overgrown and whatnot. What are your plans for the rest of the property?
Can I go along?
Well, I mean, it, I'm assuming that you're going to knock this, was this, was this actually erected in 1870?
Yeah, it was built in...
It was built in 1870. I did some research on that.
If you permit me, Chairman, I'll walk my client through how he came into the property and what his plans are, including the building, the structure, the landscaping and everything else.
Yep.
So, can you explain to the board what your intent was when you came into ownership of the property? Yeah, when we bought this, we thought it was the minor work for the renovation, and we already got the permit for the renovation. When we take out some heat drop and flooring, and we came to know that the in are not, like it's... So, when you talk about renovation, you wanted to just renovate the residential property that was existing? Yes, that was existing. Okay, so you found that it was, that renovation wasn't really feasible, so you went to the borough, and what happened next? And they told us you kind of ran away, like if you knock on the building, you have to come through and apply for the variance. And if it's already too much, you have to apply for the residential, and then you can build it as a house. And, so what's your intention if the board grants your variance? What are you going to build there, or what's your intention for the lot in general? We're going to build a single family house on the same footprint, and backyard, we're going to do like some lawn or something like that. Okay. And we're going to put a fence on the backside, like we have the Eastham, and we're going to make a fence door. So the path drew from Clemens Bridge to Eastham, that's no longer going to exist? No. Because there's going to be a fence there? Yeah. And is it your intention to pay attention to landscaping or somehow attending to the entire property? Are there portions of the property you're going to leave as is, or are you going to take care of landscaping the entire property? We're going to take care of it. The entire property? Yes. And we're going to take a look on whether if you can do it in time, then we're going to do that. Okay. So, as far as, any other questions as far as the plan out there?
Well, the, the house itself now that exists there, that you're going to take down, you're going to leave the foundation, there's a basement?
Yep.
Okay, so you're going to go from the foundation up?
Yeah.
Where, where is the front door of the new house going to be?
The same.
On the side then?
On the side.
Okay.
On the same.
Yeah, it's just the way it sits there. No, I don't have an issue with that. I thought is, it's in a commercial zone, correct?
Yes.
All right, but, but the use has always been residential, so it's legal nonconforming. So if you look at it like, I don't know how exactly it is, but in the case of destruction or over 50%, most times it's allowed to be rebuilt to the same footprint. So I don't...
That's what you're here for.
Okay, but I don't understand, like, why does he want to change the use? Is that, is that...
Well, it's still a...
I understand.
When he, it's almost instantaneous, when he demolishes the house, there'll be more than 50% so it can perform. So instead of going through...
Yeah, but Steve, it's always been not conforming. If it's a commercial zone...
But once you discontinue the use, and in our ordinance, if 50% or more is destroyed or removed, then you're not...
Right, well, you're not disc...
So it reverts back to...
But you're...
Yeah, it reverts back.
It just reverts back.
If, if you change, you know, most times they have, you... Okay.
If you see in other jurisdictions...
He needs so much use as residence.
Right, right, yeah.
Correct. You've seen a lot of other jurisdictions, and you see in other places, where they'll keep the foundations in two walls up of a residential structure, so that you don't have to...
Yeah.
So, but if...
So he's just doing a residential...
If he's taking it all the way down, to be vested in the, in his rights as a residential, he's here before to get the use variance.
And Mr. Duhon, we appreciate your thoughts. I mean, perhaps we could come forward to the board for an interpretation, but once we're here...
You're doing a great thing.
Yeah.
Doing a great thing. Yeah.
So, did you consider leaving the lot commercial? Yeah, we, sorry, it is, obviously, it is commercial, but the lot is in odd shape, that it is narrow on the one side and, you know, it extends out the other side, so we don't have parting.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, I get that, for sure.
And obviously, it's particularly suited for the site, because there was an existing home there before, correct? First residential, so we bought this as a residential, and after that, we, our process, we came to this office and then we know it is commercial.
So you're buying it with the intention of rebuilding and selling it? You're purchased, you purchase it with the intent of now rebuilding it and then reselling it?
Yes. And then, we also have the assumption that it doesn't impair the neighborhood, it doesn't impair the zone plan, are there a lot of residential properties in the area? Yeah, there are, like Clemens Bridge on the white and the left side is a residential and the front is, like, it is...
It's next again.
Well, we've offered our criteria and what our intention is, if the board has any questions.
We want to go over...
I'm going to assume that if the board acts favorable, will this tonight, that you're requesting that any pre-existing setback lines be maintained, continued?
That's our request.
All right, one last question. Mr. Box, bring your letter.
Again, we have issued a correspondence of May 2nd, 2019. We listed what all the uses were. I think we hear sufficient testimony, and also Mr. Viola, I'm going to go on the record. So we'll rely upon our letter. Do you have any question, again, I think this has, by a few members of the board, so the board will be clear, is you're going to be redoing the house, you'll be cleaning up the yard, right? You'll be cleaning up the yard, so any overgrown, any weeds, any, any trash, any debris, all that stuff, you'll be cleaning up the yard and making the yards look similar to the surrounding area. A nice residential clean yard.
And it is your intention, oh, I'm sorry, and it is your intention to resell the property, correct? So you want to make it as attractive as possible.
So I think it was like, just, you're doing the house, what you can, what you can. I'm not saying for a hardscape or anything else, just make it a nice, good residential yard, is, I think, what was being...
Yeah, because the property obviously is not the median.
Andy, with your, the applicant consent to, if there's an approval, that that's made a condition of the approval?
No, we don't have any objection to that. You're, you're going to clean up the property, make it have it cleaned up. Yeah, we have no objection to that at all.
Thank you.
Or do you come back to the landscape, or...
Yeah.
We want to market it and sell it.
Well, I mean, frankly, I think it's, you know, I think it's a very appropriate use for the site. There, there's many, many residential homes in that area, and it's kind of a checkered neighborhood, you know, where we have a little bit of commercial, a little bit of residential, so I think it's appropriate. I don't think it's going to be a problem for any of the neighbors. But what I am going to do is, at this point in time, I want to open up the meeting to the public. If anyone in the public wishes to speak on this application only, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address, if you're heard. Good evening.
I'm Michael Beluso. I own the property at 620 West Clemens Bridge, and I'm completely behind the man putting a single family home on that lot. I think it's a good thing for the neighborhood.
I do, too. I think it's going to clean it up and get the...
Anything looks better.
Yeah.
It helps us all that.
Yep.
Thank you, Michael, I appreciate it very much. Is there anyone else in the public wishing to speak on this matter? I'll entertain a motion to close the portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr....
Second.
Discretion seconded by Mr. White, all in favor?
Aye.
Were there any other questions from the board members? Any questions for professionals?
Good.
Mr. Rowan?
Okay, we're going to need a motion to approve the applicant's application, which involves a free existing, nonconforming use of a residential property within a commercial zone. The applicant seeking a use variance to continue that residential use to commercial zone. He's indicated that he's going to demolish the existing property and construct a new residential unit on the foundation as set forth on a survey by Donovan Surveyors dated April 1st, 2019. He is also requesting that when the new house is, is constructed, that he be granted permission to maintain all pre-existing setbacks regarding side yard, rear yard, and front yard. He is, one of the conditions that the board will impose on this approval would be that the applicant maintains the property, cleans the property, removes any and all debris, and maintain the outside yard area in conformance with any municipal ordinance, borough running being maintained. He is indicated that he understands that if he expands the building in any way, that he's going to have to apply for the appropriate bulk variances. There's also been a discussion if the applicant desires in the future to pave any of the parking areas, he's going to consult with our zoning official, show a plan before, before he would undertake to cover any, any part of the property with concrete or, or macadam or whatever.
And also, the applicant, we just know, the applicant testified that he'll only have one access of the driveway off of Clemens Bridge, and will not have a secondary access off of Eastham, as part of his... That's not...
So that would be a condition?
No objection. So we're not changing the zone here, correct?
No. This, this would be a use variance that runs with this property, and as long as this residential use is reestablished, once he restructures it, it'll run with this property. It's sort of commercially zoned, but it won't be a lot of...
Once the next guy tears it down, then we got...
Two years from now.
I'll be sitting here 30 years when it comes down.
No, I don't know.
All right, so we just need a motion to approve the resolution as read by Mr. Rowan?
I make a motion to approve the applicant's resolution here.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Duhon, seconded by a discretion. May I have a vote call, please?
Mrs. Duhon?
Yes.
Discretion?
Yes.
Mr. Duhon?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Dodds?
Yes.
And Mr. Lee?
Yes.
All right, good luck with it, sir.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
Take care, have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beluso. So, we're going to open up the Good and Welfare, and I know Dan doesn't have much to say back there. We're going to open the public portion to Good and Welfare. Anyone that has anything to speak on, on anything whatsoever, please bump to the microphone, state your name and address, if you're heard.
See, now, the public, I make a motion, the vote call portion.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have something else that is absolutely wonderful under Good and Welfare, and I'm going to defer to Kenneth on this. I received an email today from the South Jersey Cultural Alliance, and I'm not going to steal your thunder, because you did all the work, so please enlighten everyone here as to what transpired.
Sure, so, let's see, our group applied for a grant from the New Jersey, let's see, the South Jersey Cultural Alliance, to do, it's an arts improvement grant, and there were 43 towns that applied for it, and they've picked five finalists, and we're one of the five finalists.
No.
So we're going to be presenting a live proposal on May the 29th in Atlantic City in conjunction with a workshop symposium that they're having on creative placemaking in New Jersey, and they're doing it live because they're bidding it as a, like, Sharp Tank kind of a competition. So we're going up against Woodbury, we're going Washington Township, Camden, and I have seen it, I think it's the other town.
And we're going to just put art in, in our borough?
So our proposal was to start a mural project here in town, so recruit to do some murals. We have two buildings that, well, I had always intended to put a mural on my building, so I'm not counting that one, but Cook's Florence, who owns Dee's School of Dance, he's approached us about the one wall there that faces the parking lot where the Mexican restaurant is, about doing a mural on there. And the other one is, there's a building at the top of Clemens Bridge Road that is owned by a costume company called the Mop, and they're also interested. So those are the two businesses we're looking at. And they would be kind of like approaches into the town.
Great job.
So it's very, 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 very cool.
They did open it up to, the email that Candy is referring to is encouraging us to share that with our borough and our mayor, and invite them to come to support us as we do the competition, and there will be a lot of other information for the town to learn how funds are available for these kinds of programs, and there'll be a mural tour of the murals in, in Atlantic City. And Dan, help me with the, the grant, which was, you know, writing the grant, and actually, it was pretty amazing, there were several people from our group that did most of the grant, right?
I think, I think it's fantastic. It's fantastic that, just, just to become a finalist in that, 43 towns, just to get the top five, is a wonderful...
Yeah, so actually, yeah, on Friday, I get coaching from a man named Leo Vasquez, who is the director of the Center for Creative Placemaking in New Jersey, and I had, previously had a conversation with him on the phone, and I'm kind of excited to meet him, because I think he would be able to contact for our town for the future. He does do workshops in towns that help to identify ways that the arts can be used to help with renovating, like, attracting new businesses to towns.
Awesome. Very proud of you guys, very proud of you guys. There is a fee for the tickets, I believe it was, was it $30, Ken? To get, to get for the, to go to the Arts Tank Competition is $30, and then if you want to go to the mural tour afterwards, an additional 15. Do you know how far in advance they're going to need us to purchase those tickets?
I don't know, I would imagine pretty soon.
Okay, well, now, I've been to the venue, just on my own, it's a little bit, kind of a smaller place, so I would assume it's probably going to, I don't know, it's going to fill up fast, I don't know how they're going to, I don't know how they're going to do it. I did talk to John Riney today, you know, we're going to see if we can schedule around. Yeah, well, I can't make the morning, I would love to go to the financial creative placemaking, but I can't make that, I know that, but it's a Wednesday, and it starts at 1:00, the Arts Tank Competition starts, so my intention is to kind of work with...
Well, they notify the winner, they have it selected right there.
That day, yeah. That's the plan.
I think they're doing it as like a publicity thing, also, that's why they're, you know, having a...
And Angelo's Fairmont Tavern is right across the street, so you know how I baited John Riney. I said, "John, we'll go, we'll go do the tour, then we'll go to Angelo's for dinner." I was there Thursday night, I go there quite often, one of my faves, but, yes, that's really, really cool, and I hope I can make it. If I, if I don't have full support, I wish you all the best, and make sure you have somebody, you know, filming it, and I hope that, I hope it works out worse. That's a wonderful thing, so, very, very positive, and I know you guys put a lot of hard work and time into it, and obviously, it's paying off, so...
Yeah, another thing on that same note is, our group is planning to participate at this festival that the firemen are putting on, and I've been working with Rochelle from the high school, and the kids are going to be a temporary mural on a platform that we're making for that day, so it'll be kind of like a related mural thing.
And we had also talked about, when I was at one of Candy's meetings, possibly having a food truck night, I had a deal, there's, there's 22 towns that do it, and it's really, really, really fun. You know, you get all these different food trucks to line up, and you close off the road, and it's just, and it gets people to walk their town. I know our town's not really a walking town, just Jeff, because we're still in need of a lot of things, but at some point in time, it was, what did you call it, Imagine Run Me, I believe it was?
Yeah, it's called Reimagine Runny.
Yeah, so Reimagine Runny, and it was a thought process of trying to get people interested in what, what could be. I mean, what if we had this year, what if we had that here, and... What's that?
Where's my shirt, dude?
Can't be... Where's my shirt, Dan?
I got your bumper sticker.
You already gave me something special, you did a great job. Thanks.
Yeah, it's funny, with towns and with Ken's doing, when, once these things take a life, and it, it like becomes, I mean, things, even more interest evolves, and you can see, I mean, I remember, and Steve, you probably remember Collins for twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, absolutely.
And look what happened there.
I've been here thirty, forty, yeah, I've been, I've been there thirty-four years working.
People that started the movement and it picks up, so, uh, I think our borough is on the right track, and it's...
Yeah, and it could have come at a better time with the correlation of, of the plan.
Exactly, one of the criteria was tying it to municipal polls, and having that, that just had been, had been passed was the purpose of it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a, it's an exciting time, and I just, I hope we can, uh, catapult you guys and, and get the grants, so, yeah. Wonderful, so, anybody that can make it down and try to support it, it's, like I said, it's one o'clock in the afternoon, so if they have to sneak out for a couple hours, I'm, I'm sure it would be really cool to have some support down there. So we're going to really try and, and support you, your multiple. Does anyone else have anything they would like to speak of?
Do, do we know anything about, uh, La Quinta, what's happening there? I mean, that place is really overgrown, that's...
Laverden would be the one.
Through, or...
Yeah.
Did they?
Oh, it did.
Yeah, yeah, Fred Laverden, he, he forwarded the, the, uh, the email, and it was just, uh, yeah, apparently they kind of lost their funding or something.
Oh. Oh my gosh, I was like, I kept saying, why don't they want to do something?
Yeah, so, I think they're, I think they're totally out, and I think we still have a lot of, uh, backed money to us, but, but, but Mr. Laverden knows all about that.
So who owns the property now, is it still La Quinta?
I don't know.
Is it? Mm-hmm, never sold.
They're the owner of record.
Yeah, it's H.R. associates or something, H.R. or any...
And they lost their liquor license as well.
That went, that's why.
They let it go, they let it go.
Well, should we start filing for how the place looks?
Well, I've already issued through the state, like, due to state housings and expects to run me, a board and seal on the first floor, which is required, they can be, so, they have an abatement dated the first week of June, and I've got no response back from them as of yet, or no action taken.
They're in Florida, aren't they, Keith?
I'm sorry?
Aren't they in Florida, the parent company?
Indianapolis.
Indianapolis. Yeah, they're, they're not exactly local people, so, but, all right, guys, listen, happy Mother's Day to everybody. And, thank you, enjoy, and, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Benal? Mr. Ockley, all in favor? Getting adjourned at seven thirty-five.